Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay, I appreciate the introduction. I am Holly Parker and the project manager with SLR Consulting. And I am the active transportation lead for SLR Consulting in the Northeast. And Emily Foster is our engineer, who, a plan engineer, we like to say. She has both excellent planning and engineering skills. And Brandy has worked, as you said, on the downtown plan and a few other projects in Brattleboro and is very well acquainted with the community and a wonderful asset. So we just wanted to share a little bit of where we have been and where we're going on this project. We kicked it off in June with, we borrowed a couple of e-bikes from the library and we had a really nice tour of Brattleboro. We did about six miles, Sue, Emily, Brandy and I. And we, we just got a good kind of orientation to Brattleboro that way, especially the hills. So we were really happy to have e-bikes. And I have to plug the e-bikes at the library because they're, they're super fun and you, you feel like a superhero. You can, you can bike forever up hills on them. So then in July and August, we started putting together a project website. In this case, it's a story map. And we created an interactive mapping tool in the story map that let people put a point on the map and explain what concerns they had from a walking or biking perspective in each location. And people could also support other people's comments there. We've also been meeting with town staff, obviously, and a steering committee that, that we created to help guide this project. So this is obviously our first public meeting now. And in the coming months of the fall, we'll begin to prepare a prioritization plan to share at a subsequent public meeting later in the fall. And towards the end of the year, we'll be prepared to, to present to the select board for approval of the plan. So one of the first things we did was create a vision statement. And I'll, I'll read it out loud in case anyone's has a very small screen or visual impairments. "The town of Brattleboro is committed to improving infrastructure to enable safe bicycling and walking for transportation, commuting, recreation, equity, and individual and environmental health." The equity part, we'll talk about some more. We, we basically want to make sure that everyone is served by the transportation infrastructure. And also pedestrian walking is, is sort of among the most equitable modes of transportation because of anyone who's able-bodied or can wheel through town is, you know, can, can get around that way. It's, you, you don't have to own a car. You don't have to have a bus pass. So we thought we would try to get to know you, the audience, a little bit here and how you get around Brattleboro. So we're gonna launch a poll and ask you a few questions. The first one being, when you walk in Brattleboro, where are you going? Where are you guys going when you walk?
I run errands. Well, I usually go, yeah, a lot of errands.
All right. All right. How about we close the poll? Were you all seeing the poll okay? Okay, thank you. Okay, we're gonna end the poll and add two votes in the office here for running errands, so. And I'm gonna share the results, so. Okay. Yeah, so it's split seventy, well, the, the highest were running errands and exercise or leisure. Tied. At almost eighty percent. Okay. Just gonna launch the next poll, which is, when you bike in Brattleboro, where are you going? So it's work or school, errands, exercise or leisure, other, or I don't bicycle in Brattleboro.
I can stop drive.
Can you bike?
I guess I can do the tool. Errands.
Yeah, okay, we're gonna end this poll. And here in the municipal center, we have one that runs errands on bicycle and the other work in school, actually both. So here we have a few more people that are not bicycling in Brattleboro than in the last poll. And then running errands is the highest with eight out of fourteen responses. So the next poll is about busing. And so we want to know, take the bus in Brattleboro and if so, where are you going? And it's the same choices. Work or school, run errands, exercise or leisure, other, and it should be, I do not take the bus in Brattleboro. I apologize for that error in the poll. Launch it. I'm gonna end the poll. And overwhelmingly, there's not a lot of bus, bus users in this crowd. There are some that run errands or exercise, do other. Sorry. And then our final poll here is, how do you get to the bus? Do you walk? Do you bike? Get a ride, some other method? Or a lot of you told us you already don't take the bus. So, launch that poll. Okay, and so somebody walks, two might take the bus and the rest don't take the bus and, or might bicycle to the bus stop, so. Thanks for that. Yeah, interesting. Whoops. I think. Okay, so we're gonna talk a little bit about the existing bicycling and walking conditions in Brattleboro. This map is showing in green the location of existing bike lanes. So we obviously have some on Route Nine, Western Avenue. We have some on Guilford Road near the park, Living Memorial Park, and then up on Putney Road, sort of in the commercial area. And then multi-use path, this is the West River Trail coming in from the top, from the north to south. And this blue line, blue squiggly line here is a shared lane on Williams Street. And that's denoted by these icons, these little shared bike, charros, they're called. And we'll show you a little bit more. And then we'll show you some more images of, of what that looks like on the actual streets of Brattleboro. And orange here on this map is showing the sidewalks in town. So we also have some data on the condition of the sidewalks in Brattleboro. And you'll see, you know, there is a lot of sidewalk in town. The condition of it is, is pretty important. If, if it's not in good condition, people may choose not to use it as much as they would otherwise. And it also creates a barrier to, to connecting to places where it's either missing or in, in bad condition. So one way that we might start to prioritize sidewalk projects or pedestrian projects is to look at, you know, which are showing here in, in red, which means they're in poor condition. Do we wanna, you know, create a sort of schedule for improving the, the sidewalk that's in poor condition? So that work has actually begun and there have been some sidewalk improvements done on South Main Street recently. From Estabrook Street to Lawrence Street and on South Main from Pine Street to Cotton Mill Hill. Also, and a rectangular rapid flashing beacon, that's what the RRFB stands for, was recently installed on Fairview Street. So some of the existing pedestrian facilities, we just have sort of a random sampling here. This is Black Mountain Road headed towards the police station. There is obviously some sidewalk here. It's, it's got a lot of growth, botanical growth along it, and then it just stops at a certain point. And if you're, if you need to walk to the police station, you know, you're just walking along the edge of the road. Putney Road, there, there were a lot of comments from the community about the, the condition for walking and biking. You can see here that the share, the shoulder is nice and wide as you're going over the bridge and it gets narrower as you head north. And there's a goat path over on this other side. That's, it's pretty well-worn, but it's, it's quite narrow. Main Street does have biking and walking infrastructure more so than some other parts of town. And bicycle facilities, as you could see on the map before, Western Avenue, west of ninety-one, has some bike lane. Guilford Street, near the Living Memorial Park. And Putney Road, near the commercial area, this is near the Staples Plaza. And then Williams Street has this little charrow marking, which is sort of something that you would do as a treatment for a low speed, low-traffic-speed, low-volume road as a way to indicate to bicyclists that this might be a, a road that's maybe more preferential for biking on because of the low-traffic volumes and speeds. And it's also an indication to drivers that bicycles belong here on this road. So when we asked you, the community, how you, you know, what you are concerned about as a bicyclist or pedestrian or someone with, you know, using a wheelchair, what, what are your concerns? We got a lot of comments. We got over two hundred and fifty comments. And this is really hard to interpret. But we have, we created a heat map that shows the concentrations of people's comments. And people were also able to, to support other people's comments. So, you know, in, in this case, response number twenty-one was on Putney Road. Twenty people responded to it. And we'll show you some of those, those comments in a moment. This is a, a heat map of all of the comments. So you see that this part of Putney Road at the West River, obviously got a lot of comments. This kind of middle area here is, is downtown and what, what we've learned is lovingly called malfunction junction. A little further south on Canal Street, there were also a lot of comments near Bird Street area. And a lot of comments along Western Avenue. We, we wanted to understand, you know, if there was any difference in the way people were commenting or the, the areas people were concerned about if we split the comments up into bicycle versus pedestrian. So we had a sort of almost equal number of comments about bicycle issues versus pedestrian issues. And for the purposes of the heat map, we broke down some of these other comments into those two categories too. So you could see how, how it changed. So for bike-related comments, it, it really, the highest concentrations of comments were along Western Avenue and downtown. And then also this Putney Road area at the West River. I think that, that, that's the Veterans Memorial Bridge that goes over the West River there. Yeah. And this overlaid on this, again, are the bicycle facilities that exist. So it kind of makes sense. You see Putney Road, there's this nice bike lane and all of a sudden it, it ends. So it, you know, it's obviously logical that people are, are concerned that if they've been enjoying bike lane and all of a sudden, they, they don't have bike lane anymore. So these were some of the actual comments and words. Terrifying when biking or on foot. On Putney Road, the narrow bridge on Western Avenue, over the Whitestone Brook. And, you know, more comments about Putney Road gravel collecting at Town Crier Drive. And Western Avenue, you know, those entrances and exits around I ninety-one are, are pretty challenging to navigate. And the, the, the roundabout, rather. Thank you. On your exit three is, is pretty scary if you're on a bicycle. And of course, the Vermont Country Deli gets a lot of, you know, comments as well as being dangerous because of the cars pulling out. So we wanted to show you what some of the upcoming projects would be that we're, are starting to address some of these issues. And I'm gonna pass the baton to Emily to talk through some of these. Oh, Emily is muted. I'm sorry. All right, hold on just a moment. I guess the ask to unmute is.
Got it. Thank you. Yeah, so as Holly said, there are some planned projects, both by the town and by the state, that are upcoming. And one includes bike and pedestrian and vehicular improvements to Putney Road from West River, from the West River to the existing roundabout at the exit three ramp. And then also bike lanes on Route Thirty from West River Park to Park Place. And then some additional bike lanes on Western Avenue and West Brattleboro. And then some just east of ninety-one to help add more bike facilities and start to create a more cohesive network around town.
Thank you. So for the pedestrian-related comments, it, the, the kind of concentrations changed a little bit and there was more concern both in the downtown and this High Street, Green Street area. And, and a little bit more on Canal Street, southern sections of Canal Street, as well as around Living Memorial Park. And, and certainly still on Putney Road. These were some of the comments, again, like a lot of comments about green. This is the comment about Green Street, that traffic is moving way too fast between High Street and Lippel Street. There are lots of children around. There's a school there, obviously. Canal Street between Pine and Maple, people were really concerned about the, the speed of traffic, no crosswalk. The Marina, again, getting lots of comments. And the sidewalk on Wilson's Wood Road, this is obviously near the high school. Bridge Street and Vernon Street area, this is an exciting opportunity when the bridge relocates. Someone, you know, is already looking ahead to, to, you know, the comment that we should make that more pedestrian-oriented as the traffic flow changes with the, with the bridge relocation. Lighting and safety on Western Avenue. And the turning movement, movements into the Vermont Country Deli are an issue, as well as the crosswalk at Brookside Drive. Someone had asked if we could have, actually several people asked if there could be a blinking warning light there, similar to the one at the covered bridge crossing. And then this was a great comment too, that at the one, one-tastic at Harris Tyler Street area, this, this needs to be more pedestrian-friendly because people cross here to walk in the neighborhood and to access the West River. So some of the upcoming pedestrian improvements include, again, the Putney Road improvements. These, we'll, we'll show you some of, some depictions of, of what this will look like. It will have more roundabouts and bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure when it's constructed. The sidewalk improvement on Western Avenue is, is also planned, as is the Melrose Bridge reconstruction. And Route One Forty-two, Vernon Street, new bridge at Morning Side Commons. And sidewalk improvements on Clark Avenue from Alborot to Canal Street, as well as these sidewalk improvements happening on Green Street near the school. I think, actually, this might be a good opportunity to pause because we've talked a lot and shared a lot of upcoming improvements and does anyone have any comments or, or questions thus far? Yeah, so I just remind you, if you could please raise your digital hand and I will get to you. I, first one, and if you're in the room and would like to speak, just raise your hand and I will call on you. So we're gonna start with Philip.
Can you hear me?
Can hear you. Thanks for being.
Good. I have a, a question about the future. And it's a hypothetical. I would like to know if there is any possibility at all at some point in the future, hopefully the near future, but perhaps the future, to have a bicycle way, I don't know what you call it, a bicycle path or a bicycle way, down Main Street from approximately the post office all the way down to the bottom of Main Street. That would implicate removing the dozen or so parking spaces on one side of the, or other of Main Street and relocating those parking spaces elsewhere. And there are possibilities for doing that, of course. But is there any possibility at all, is this in the thinking at all? Or is there a possibility of getting this into the thinking of what's about to occur or not?
So it, it's a good question and one that we're gonna actually address in the slides in a little bit. I can tell you that with the downtown plan that we had worked on, that was looked at, you know, the, the width of the, the right-of-way and whether or not you could have bicycle lanes and sidewalks and, and all of that. So we're, we're gonna address that. There are some limitations. And then I think there's the larger question that we encountered with that plan of, if we were to, you know, remove parking, is it more desirable to have wider sidewalks or to do both bike lanes and sidewalks where we could fit bike lanes? So it is definitely something, you know, that's, has been discussed and will probably, you know, could go a little bit further with this plan. Thanks for asking. Thank you. Kevin, we have Kevin from the room. You should be picked up on this.
Oh, perfect. I'll scoot a little bit closer. This is Kevin O'Brien. I guess my question is about the heat maps and kind of the, the chart that we looked at for the amount of, of likes. And I was wondering if, I guess, both of those took into consideration the individual comments that may have been in the area of those liked comments. A couple of folks that I talked to, instead of going around and putting likes, added their, their own comments. And I think of it in a similar vein as the liked or hearted comments.
Great question. We, we're gonna go more carefully through all of the comments as, as we go through this process. We just, we're looking for a quick visualization. Because really, it does, the, the heat map does sort of track to where we know there are issues. And it's, it's just a, a sort of easy way to, to show where some of the major areas of concern are. I think what we will see is that, we have already noticed that there were several comments that weren't upvoted or supported that, that were very similar. So we're gonna group those together and get a little more granular on this. So that, that's a great question. I think Emily might have something to add.
Yeah, sorry. I think Holly, though, to answer his question, they, it does include all, the heat maps include all the comments that were, that were raised. And then it just takes into account the location that they're in and that's how it creates the, the yellow or the red is, is the more comments that are near the same location, then the color changes. So all, all the comments were accounted for in the heat map that shows all the comments. And then when we separated into bike and pedestrian, we did our best to look at the non-bike and pedestrian and, and if they were, had any relation to the subject, we would, we split them. But we will look at all of the comments in more detail.
Thank you. I stand corrected. Yeah, it is, it's, and it's also kind of hard to see. You see the sort of blue glow that those are, you know, those are still concentrations of comments. They just get more dispersed. So it's still kind of a, a good visualization of, of where the concentrations of concern are. And Gary in the room has a question or comment? He should pick you up.
Oh, okay. Can you hear me, Holly?
Yes.
Gary Stroud, by Chair Planning Committee and also on the subcommittee for this excellent project. I guess, I, maybe I, I, when I looked at the map too, looking at certain areas, there are places, I don't know, you can't put the stop sign, the flashing thing, but there are blind spots at certain turns and stuff when driving. I don't know, mirrors. And there are a few mirrors at some places where you bike and drive. I don't know if that can be factored in. I don't know if that can be factored in also. It's certainly just to keep that aesthetic, but then, you know, the green, you know, not having too many electronics flashing and stuff. So I was just thinking that something can be incorporated. Is it just a wish list thing? I don't know.
You're you're talking about visibility issues in in some of these locations.
South Main Street, there is a mirror when cars are coming up. And by and there I just want to get certain, there are certain areas even on way because I, when I I love walking, there is driving involved. But could mirrors also be incorporated that in certain areas that are blended in with the natural nature of things?
I I think we will look at, you know, the locations where people are concerned about visibility and and think about all of the possible solutions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, Kevin.
Sorry, just one more for the moment. This is Kevin again, thinking about if, will there be an opportunity before the next public meeting for folks to add additional comments? Will it be reopened? Sure, I guess wasn't closed?
We we have closed the the commenting period. But if you if you continue to have comments on the last slide we're showing, please reach out to Sue. And you you literally could just poke her. But I I know you know how to contact her. But yeah, we're trying to assimilate all of the information we have now. But you certainly can continue to comment through. Thank you very much. Good question. I'm not seeing any other hands at this time, Holly, so I think we can move forward.
Okay, I'm gonna pass it back to Emily to talk about some of the upcoming improvements, in particular Putney Road.
Thanks, Holly. So yeah, as we kind of briefly discussed, the state has a project that is slated for 2025 to improve Putney Road. And it will add new sidewalks, bike and bike lanes from the West River Bridge to the existing roundabout at Chesterfield Road. The project will also add four roundabouts and provide some curb management with some of the driveways along this, particularly the commercial area. So the cross section on the left depicts the improvements that are proposed by the state near the West River Bridge, so near the yellow area in both the pedestrian and bicycle comment heat maps. And as shown, the improvements will add conventional bike lanes and sidewalks on both sides of the roadway. And then shown to the right is a more illustrative drawing of the roundabout that is proposed. It's actually a dog bone roundabout, as if you can see that there's the two roundabouts that are connected. And this is at the Fairfield Shopping Plaza Center, where the Staples and the Aldi is. So once done, and the improvements look a little different along the whole stretch of roadway as the right of way changes and as the conditions on either side changes. But once done, they will provide a continuous bike facility and pedestrian facility on at least one side of the bike facility on both sides, pedestrian on one side. And then the roundabouts will help to slow down traffic. And then also improve bicycle and pedestrian safety at the intersections. And we did receive some comments about the existing roundabout and how hard it is to bike around it. So I just wanted to note that these roundabouts will treat bicycles a little different. It's hard to see in this picture, but basically there, what's what is planned is to have a ramp where the bicycle will ramp up onto the sidewalk and then be able to and it'll be a ramp made for bicycles and then it'll be able to traverse around the roundabout and cross with the pedestrians at the various crosswalks. So hopefully it'll be better for both pedestrians and bicyclists and and vehicles. So that is the state's plan for Putney Road. And it will, if it, if and when it's built, it will hopefully bring a lot of positive impact on the bicycle and pedestrian mobility in the area. Sure. So we are now just gonna quickly go through some of the possible improvements that have been studied in the past in Brattleboro. And these are, there's been a lot of studies, but these are some particular ones that really could be used to improve the bicycle and pedestrian network in town. And if completed, could help alleviate some of the concerns that we have heard so far. So Holly, and I guess I touched on it earlier about the bicycle and pedestrian facilities that are actually being added to Western Avenue in both West Brattleboro and then in a section east of 91. And those are planned to be added soon, but then there's still will be gaps along Western Avenue. So in 2017, the town studied the feasibility of providing continuous bike facilities and improved pedestrian crossings on Western Avenue from Edward Heights to High Street. And again, while these improvements aren't planned, they do provide a great roadmap for for easy, easy is a general word, but for not, you know, intensive construction to connect the gaps along Western Avenue in the future. So that is one example. And then in talking about about my, excuse me, about Main Street in downtown. It is a very active area and we have received a lot of comments on the general area. This area was studied comprehensively in the downtown plan. And the stretch from Elliot Street to Canal Street, which is the red area in the left turn, left side of the slide. It is a pinch point for mobility. And as stated in the downtown plan, the area is not wide enough to provide two vehicular travel lanes as well as a bike lane and or wider sidewalks. And this area doesn't have on-street parking, so the ability to remove it to improve head or bike facilities is not there. So more creative solutions or intensive infrastructure changes would likely have to be made to provide continuous bike facilities or improved pedestrian facilities along the whole stretch of Main Street. So I will then pass it on to Brandy to kind of go into a little bit more detail about some of the other downtown possible improvements.
Do you want me to leave this slide up, Brandy? Do you wanna say something more about this or move on?
I I think Emily Emily did a pretty good description there. I think maybe the one thing, just so people can kind of visualize that the real pinch point is basically the at the latches. So if you think about the that building sitting there and the building directly across the street from it, those two fronts of the buildings are only 50 feet apart. Whereas if you go further up and you're somewhere between Elliot Street and High Street, the fronts of the buildings are 75 feet apart. And so if you think about that variability and how much space you've you've got between the buildings, you can see why the same solution is probably not going to be possible all the way through the corridor. But yeah, you can go to the next slide if you want, Holly. So with the downtown plan, one of the things that was looked at was formalizing perhaps better and improving the existing, you know, ways that people get around. Basically, the cut-throughs and the, you know, back of Main Street routes that people use if they want to travel as an alternative to being on Main Street. A lot of this is 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 walking through existing parking lots, many of them public parking lots. And so there could be ways to make improvements that would be beneficial, both for the people who are trying to use that as an alternate pedestrian or even bicycle route. And then for people who have parked and find themselves to be pedestrians and now need to navigate their way through and out of the parking lot to their destination. So that idea of the way around is is really looking at that existing informal system and and trying to improve and formalize it a bit. And then we we touched earlier, Holly did, on the project, the bridge, the new bridge being constructed and then the implications that that will have for the malfunction junction intersection. Obviously, the same number of cars are going to be moving through, same number of vehicles. But the pattern of how vehicles are gonna move through the intersection will change. And without vehicles needing to make that sharp turn onto or from Bridge Street, there should be some reduction in congestion and a better flow of vehicular traffic. And then it also opens up the opportunity to reshape that intersection a little bit and to then make Bridge Street a a pedestrian and bicycle oriented street. Because the only cars that will need to be getting down there will be those going to the the train station, the parking lot at the park or going to the Whitestone Station. So it'll be a a small amount of vehicle traffic and an ample amount of space to to use for pedestrians and bicyclists. So if you wanna show the next slide. So one of the ideas that came out of the downtown plan was to look at what's called a wunnerf, which is a shared street where you would actually take the Bridge Street surface and turn that into they're typically some sort of a textured surface. So if you think about the space, for instance, in front of the co-op, where you're you're passing the front doors, it's quite clear as a driver as you go through there that you're driving across an area that's primarily for pedestrians. And that's denoted by that difference in surface. And so taking that concept and bringing it to the street, you could still allow for vehicles to move through, but indicate that this is, you know, the top priority is for pedestrians and bicyclists. And then the the curb radius and the crosswalk from Bridge Street across connecting over to the Whitestone pathway without the need to accommodate the the truck traffic making that turn. That could be be reshaped and be made a lot more amenable to pedestrians.
Okay, so one area that we received a good amount of comments is Canal Street. So we thought that we would do a little exercise with you to help demonstrate some of the challenges of allocating dedicated space within a roadway right of way. So this is a general cross section of the middle portion of Canal Street. Today, it has two travel lanes and on-street parking on both sides. And then, you know, typical sidewalks on both sides as well. So this space could potentially be reallocated differently to provide improved pedestrian and bicycle facilities. Go to the next slide. So these are three different, you know, ways that this that this could possibly happen. Option A shows the replacement of on-street parking with bike lanes. Option B shows the replacement of one side of on-street parking and one side of sidewalk to a cycle track. And this could also be a a shared use path, so pedestrians could still walk on it as well. And then option C shows the replacement of both on-street parking sides with wider sidewalks that could be shared with both pedestrians and bicycles.
So we're gonna poll you again. Wanted to see what you thought of these three options. And I think I can keep this slide up while you launch the poll soon, so people have it for reference, have the images for reference. Which one do you like, Gary?
Oh, oh, I like.
You have to choose A, B, or C.
Sorry.
Do you have a preference?
Again, to be honest, I wouldn't focus on that well, just listening. B is sitting right down.
Yeah, all right. I'm gonna close the poll. I'm gonna close the poll. We've got an A and a B in the room.
She has the bike lanes to the right.
Holly, I wonder if we can open that up for comments a little bit?
I'd love to know. So anyone who said A, do you wanna say more about why he chose A?
Not sure you saw the results. Oh, hold on, sorry. First, we're gonna go with Prudence and then with Alice. Go ahead, Prudence.
So I I voted B and then immediately changed my mind. And I prefer A because I think we need a sidewalk on both sides. And I think the shared use path path is a really bad idea when there's a lot of pedestrian traffic. I just don't think it's safe for pedestrians to share that with cyclists. And also with e-bikes going faster, it's, I feel, it makes it even more so that way. On on a street like Canal, I think shared you pa- shared use paths can be really effective in some places, but not Canal Street. Thanks.
Thank you. Alice?
Yeah, and let me just echo Prudence's with the sidewalk. It's a very heavy pedestrian area, and I think the shared use is not such a great idea. I also think that just removing parking and the fact that Canal Street is not, most of Canal Street doesn't have really bad speeding problems. I think as a cyclist, sharing the road on that bike lane, even though it's not a separated one, would work better. I think the I think putting, for Brattleboro, I think putting a multi-use path has to be very carefully done because we don't have one. And so we have no history of it. And B, really bad idea for Brattleboro because I think we don't have anything like that. And I think most people wouldn't get two-way bike lanes on one side.
Thank you. Janet?
Yeah, I agree with that. That was one of the reasons I didn't vote for B because it's it's a little unusual and it's confusing. And I've been in communities that have done that, and it's made it hard for people to understand. On the other hand, looking at it, and I voted for A because I think it is, you know, it's a little more traditional, easy for people to understand. But on the other hand, if you're coming from Maple Street and trying to get down on to Canal Street, that B could be a good idea because you don't have to dart all the way across Canal Street. That's the only thing I'm thinking. You know what I, you know what I mean? I mean, that's a really dangerous when you're coming down Maple and trying to turn left onto Canal near the hospital. Really, really scary spot.
Thank you. Anybody else have comments they wanna make? Gary?
Could I retract my B?
You can retract your B.
Wanna retract and go back to? I I gotta agree with Prudence because I live on Canal Street. I've seen it all. I'm right there in the heart of it, right across from Gooers. Yes, there are access. Yes, there is heavy traffic coming from the bridge between school, businesses. People do commute by bike up and down that street from what I see. Right, that cross section can be very tricky. Dangerous between Elm and Canal because the school's right there, but the school bus and police used to sit right there. So I say, and but then again, because it's not that wide enough too. That would have to be wide because the car's already parked in sometimes too. So I don't know, that's a tricky area, Canal Street. I I I it's a hard call.
Yeah, I think, I mean, this is just to take the temperature and and get the reaction on cycle track and and shared use path. I think any, you know, further project is gonna take some deep engineering.
Real, yes, sir. And we have to really like sit there and chill like the guys at the school course and really take that survey.
We have Barry and then we have somebody in the room.
So thank you. I think the easiest for me was to was what people said about B. That two-lane, two opposite directions bicycling on one side of the street is fairly confusing, unusual, hard to get used to. So I unusual, hard to get used to. So I, uh, immediately found that. I picked C. And I respect very much the opinion of Prudence and the others that shared use sidewalk could be, um, difficult. But the main reason why I picked C was because I think that the topmost priority when possible is to get bicycles away from cars. Um, especially with the notable uptick in bicycle car accidents, uh, in the United States and abroad uh, for so many reasons, which makes a lifelong, uh, a life worried. Uh, having a bicycle, having, uh, a lane, a bike path with a buffer, but where cars can't get close to them, that a distracted driver cannot get close to the bicyclist, um, is my priority. Now, I, but I respect the, the thought that it's, it's tough for pedestrians when bikes go there. I would hope, and, and it makes it even tougher with the advent of e-bikes, which is a big wild card for, um, for this whole thing. But I would hope that there can be enough, um, respect, understanding that pedestrians have the right of way over bicyclists. Um, most of the time, I think that's the, uh, protocol, especially on a sidewalk. That maybe it could work with enough education and understanding that, uh, that there are rights of way even on a shared use, uh, path. So that's my comment, that my priority is getting wherever possible to get a real separation. Bike paths are nice, uh, bike lanes are nice, but they're still pretty scary and, uh, recent statistics, um, uh, prove that out.
Thank you, Barry. Um, we have a comment from the room.
Yeah, I like both A and C, but I, you know, I'm moving more towards the idea of C only because I'm relatively new to the community, I've been here for five years, and I primarily drive. And, you know, and do a lot of walking. But the speed at which people travel on the highways off is often 10 miles over the speed limit. And I don't see anything being done to mitigate that. If you have those narrow bike lanes, the traffic going 10, 15 miles with a speed limit, it puts the bicycles at risk and drivers at risk too. And so, you know, neither, neither A or C is a perfect fit. But I'd probably move towards C as the other gentleman was, you know, it's just the idea of getting bicycles, unless you can put speed bumps in and slow traffic down. But the reality is everybody's driving 10 miles over the speed limit. And I'm guilty for two. You know, I go with the traffic and it's usually that much faster. I'm checking my speed, I'm going, I can't believe I'm going this fast. That's better than.
Thank you. Anyone else have a comment? Janet, your hand is still raised, but I'm not sure if that's a legacy thing or if you wanted to make another comment. And then we have, uh, oh, did it go down?
Nope, no.
Um, okay. Uh, so Kevin has a comment here in the room.
Yeah, hi, this is Kevin O'Brien again. I think I would like to change. I initially was thinking A, but I'm much more on the, the fan of C, thinking because currently in Brattleboro, we have so many drivers that will use the bike lane to go around someone that's, say there's somebody trying to turn left into the hospital, they will use the bike lane as a way to go around that car waiting to safely turn left. Um, and it's caused, um, me to feel very unsafe on the road at times. Um, and kind of as we're thinking about these things, um, the big thing for me is a lot of the year is covered by snow and ice and other inclement weather. And I think that C could be an option if we prioritize it, you know, on, on that map that DPW has for what gets clouded and maintained first. Um, it'd be a really interesting option.
Thank you. Great points. Are there any other comments on these configurations?
So are cyclists and sidewalkers share the same, uh, I don't know if those cyclists weren't permitted on sidewalks. I'm just confused about.
So multi-use, this C option, shared use paths, they are built wider. I think they're usually 10 to 12 feet. And yes, they are permitted to be on there.
Keen because you can't use.
Yeah, there, I mean, there actually are some sidewalks in Brattleboro that you can't drive on, uh, can't ride a bicycle on. But those are of sidewalk width. This would be, the shared use path is wider.
And oftentimes I have a line down the, down, around one side or the other indicating what's bicycle, what's, you know, walking. And so it doesn't always follow, people always follow, but it helps.
Uh, Barry has his hand up.
Uh, quickly, uh, you know, the wider sidewalks helps and it, it's also an option. I've seen it elsewhere, maybe only in Europe, but, um, that a shared use, but, uh, uh, path, uh, shared, shared use sidewalk could also have markings to indicate, uh, the bicyclists, uh, on one side and the pedestrians on the other. And hopefully that would go, now, of course, there's, there's overlap, you know, when, when possible, uh, but that would go a long way towards, um, reducing that, uh, the, 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 the risks to pedestrians that a fast bicyclist would, um, would cause. And I really appreciated, uh, Kevin's comment because that clarified for me what I said, you know, people, drivers will, uh, on, on an A thing, bike lanes, drivers go on the, on the bike lane a lot because they just don't respect it. Um, or they have, um, you know, they have their needs to get someplace fast. They, and, you know, we bicyclists are fairly ill-respected in general. And we have to take that into account because that's not going to go away so easily.
Great, great points. Thank you. Alice, that's her hand up.
I just want to say I'm really pleased, though, that in all three plans, we're talking about making, getting rid of parking. I think that cars parking on streets is really aggravating. We've learned to live with this in our country for 100 years. And I think that cars should not be parked on streets. I think streets should be for travel. And I think that just the fact that you've done that in all three of these scenarios, I'm really pleased. Um, oh, no, I take it back. B. I'll take it away, take it away. Right, I just saw that. I was like, shoot. Okay, take B away. But I, I just really think that the, the, the fact that, like, I, I actually would love to talk about that Main Street concept at some point. Not, it doesn't have to be this second, but I want to comment on it. Um, but I think parking drives travel, which is insane in towns, and free parking really drives it. And, um, I just think we need to address that and then at least with A and C, we're addressing it. Um, both of them would be far superior to what we see now on a Canal Street.
Thank you. We have a comment from the room?
Yeah, I was just thinking about, you know, I love the idea of not having cars in the road. But I also live, we live in an aging community. And oftentimes you have to have parking to allow people to get out and get to a home easily. And so what do you do with the aging communities on walkers? On wheelchairs and things of that nature. And so I think you have to accommodate the idea of cars parking on the street. Uh, it's just, you know, I have a number of friends who are in their 80s and 90s. And the idea of having to walk a block or more is almost, is impossible for them. So it's like accommodating our elderly. I think it's really important. In some way, in some fashion. If nothing else, creating a, a loading zone in, in periodicity, you have a line of people that park for a period of time and just unload somebody and then move into an area. But we also have a lack of parking off-street too, in these areas we're talking about. And so there's always an issue. I, I don't know what the answer is.
I think, I think definitely with parking, there's a balance. Um, so, yeah, I mean, I think it's something we're gonna have to encounter, um, as we try to configure, uh, the right of way to meet the needs of everybody.
I do envy you, your project is incredible.
Well, it's about compromises, right? There's a limited, a finite amount of space between the curbs. So we have to decide as a community, you know, what's, what's most important? How do we accommodate the most number of people? How do we do it equitably? So these are the things we're gonna be wrestling with as we, as we move forward. Um, has this hand here?
Hey, hi, thanks. Um, as a cyclist, I can guarantee you that the issue with C will be that any cyclist that's trying to move at speed will look at pedestrian traffic on the sidewalk and they'll stay on the road. Um, they'll mix it, they'll mix with the cars rather than dodge pedestrians on a, on a very broad sidewalk. It's, it's almost guaranteed that you would have a mix. You'd still have a mix of cyclists and cars on the road because casual cyclist on the, on the sidewalk, sure, but someone who's trying to get from point to point and move it and, and speed. And, and you have to keep in mind that, uh, uh, a strong cyclist can move in traffic at fit between 15 and 18 miles an hour with no problem. And they won't, they can't do that on a sidewalk.
Thank you. Good point. Great. Um, that's all I'm seeing, Holly. Okay. We will move forward. So we've decided to call this an action plan because there have been a lot of plans already in Brattleboro. Um, so we really need, that, that's why we've spent a lot of time focusing on that balance between, you know, what are your current comments? Um, and what has already been studied or recommended so far? Because there, there are a lot of good ideas out there already and good studies completed. And, and we even know the parking environment because, um, a parking study was done in 2018, I believe. And it, it actually showed that there's plenty of parking downtown. Um, it's, it gets obviously very specific to each, each specific location and sort of the expectation that you should be able to park directly outside, you know, the place you're going. Um, and, and the point about the elderly, accommodating the elderly is, is obviously very, very important as well. So how do we prioritize, given all of these many factors? I mean, safety is kind of the thing that motivated you all to write a comment in the first place because that's what you feel. You feel threatened and that's, um, that's a big motivator. And it's, it's of utmost importance when we're planning. So safety and feasibility, um, of a project, like how, what can you do with that curb-to-curb space on the road? Those are the things that we as, uh, planners and engineers will be taking into account when, when we make suggestions or recommendations for how to move forward. But we do have also this equity issue, you know, are we accommodating the elderly appropriately? Are we accommodating people of different incomes? You know, people who are from zero car households, um, don't have the option to drive. Um, that's also a major consideration as we're, as we're thinking through how to prioritize projects. Are we connecting people to each other and to the places they need to go to? And then obviously where the rubber meets, meets the road is, is cost. So in the, the last few slides we have, we're gonna talk a little bit more about connectivity and cost. So one way you can start thinking about connections is look at what are your destinations? What are your major destinations? And, uh, as we were talking through this some more, we realized we, we didn't include parks on here as a, uh, category, but we were thinking more about what are the essential things that people need to get to? To schools, to groceries, to emergency services. Um, so those were what we kind of mapped out. Again, this is just an exercise to, to think about how we might prioritize projects. Because when we created a quarter-mile radius buffer around each of these locations, we thought, well, if you chose something like schools or grocery stores and you started to make sure that you had good pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure in, in that defined area, um, around each of them, they, they would eventually, you know, in many cases, they overlap, these quarter-mile radii overlap. So maybe that would be a way to prioritize projects because something like schools is also a great. It, it's really hard to argue that you, that it's not a good idea to, to, um, you know, to make your children safe going to and from school and able to do it on their own. Um, also learning some independence in the mix. So, um, again, this was just another exercise where we're trying to, to work through what are the ways to, you know, to, to prioritize all of the issues that have come up in the comments. And then there is the cost and funding issue. So we asked the question, what's in the town's budget currently for sidewalk and bicycle improvements? And these, these amounts are, in some cases, you know, identified as, uh, funds to match grants. So it's not, this is not to say that this is all the money that there is to pay for sidewalk and bicycle improvements over the next two years, but for perspective, um, the recent quarter-mile of sidewalk improvements on South Main Street cost $240,000. Um, there was granite curbing, you know, it's, um, it's not, it's not inexpensive. And just a quarter mile of bike lane striping, um, assuming no road widening is needed is, is, you know, eight and a half thousand dollars. So, um, you know, we, we have to keep in mind, you know, the cost issue as well. And as we're going forward, you know, how, how we want to, um, you know, maybe allocate funds for bicycle and pedestrian projects. Um, do, do we want to pause there? That, that, that was a lot to think about. Yeah. You know, if anybody has questions or comments, um, let's see.
Lot of projects, but very little money.
All the inches to a foot and three feet to a yard.
Um, let's see. Alice?
So I think that, um, like taking away parking, increasing funding for improvements is crucial to improving bicycle and pedestrian safety in our town. The town has, over the last few years, increased these funds. Um, and we have heard from the town that sometimes increasing the funding for sidewalk and bicycle improvement means taking it away from another area of improvement, namely car. Um, uh, for things for cars. Um, the bicycle community, and I think the bicycle pedestrian community in Brattleboro would like more funding to be, to be going toward bicycle and pedestrian improvements. And we are willing to sacrifice some of the car improvements for that to happen. Um, and, uh, I, I, I mean, I see what you're trying to say here about how very little money goes, or maybe a lot of money goes not very far. But I think that one of the problems is, is the mentality is that when it comes to improving things for motorists, no cost is too great. And I say that because I know that in some of my experience working, for instance, in the schools in this district, uh, I remember when the, the high school recently had their parking lot paved. And then 10 years, well, it was done at the pro, in the project 10 years ago and then repaved. The repaving of parking lots can be like a million dollars for the high school. And there's, they do it. And the town does it. And the town doesn't seem to find that crazy. Whereas they look at things like, well, we want to make the sidewalks better on Elliott Street. Oh, well, that would cost several million dollars. Okay. Fine, we want several million dollars to be spent on improving sidewalks on Elliott Street, which is a hugely densely populated pedestrian area. Um, I just think that that's part of changing people's mindset away from cars and everything being easy for cars. And, and, and our, our friend who spoke earlier, I don't know your name, I apologize about the issue of the elderly. I agree, the elderly need, that we're people who are people who have mobility issues need to be close. But generally, as I know from Canal Street, most places have driveways and driveways with little parking, with parking. Most, most places don't have, need this on-street parking that's provided for them. Um, and it's, it just makes me very, um, upset when I see numbers like this and we realize. upset when I see numbers like this and we realize how little we, it goes to, to do these improvements, but we're so willing to do other kinds of improvements for cars and nobody questions that.
Thank you, Alice. We've, Rob?
I think also looking as far into the future as we can and planning as far into the future as we can is going to save money as well. If you do a little tiny improvement and then you have to redo it again to expand it in a few years and keep doing that, it costs a lot of money. So I would encourage everyone to look way into the future.
Thank you. Gary? And then we'll have Prudence.
Well, I can understand pretty much where everyone is. Like, well, a lot of the places, like the hospitals have parking accommodations, your grocery stores. But like downtown for people with disabilities, elderly, for people that are disabled, that's, you don't want to exclude them from going down there shopping. On Main Street, it's better accommodating for them to get into certain areas. If that, we can go back and forth with the big plan that was supposed to have been a long time ago, how buses were supposed to be the solution and accommodating people, but that's another story. But taking into consideration, they have a common denominator that we all can share together. Because like you said, a lot of elderly people, 80s, 90s aren't riding bikes. They need that to get to and from and enjoy this much pleasures downtown as anyone else. So to be exclusive. And I count in parking spots, I've gone downtown and I'm having to say to get to, say Amy's Bakery or the works. Finding a disabled spot, not just parking, can be an issue, but I think we can come to a common ground that we all can see that the numbers there being included with that could have some accommodation because right now parking that we have more of an influx of people in Brattleboro, no, if people have noticed, there's more people that have moved here, which means now there's more parking needed for people. Even up on Canal Street. At certain areas, I see them parking up along there and stuff. So like you were speaking before about, you know, shoveling and all that and getting things done. You know, we have to consider that too down the road. Yes, good now, but then later on, who's going to maintain that? You know, these are the thing, and if it's, if the road or something happens, who's going to upkeep that? So these are the factors you have to take in consideration with that amount of money. So I just throw that in there for food, for dark people. So when you're going on this too, you have to consider those factors also as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Gary. Prudence?
I just, I wanted to say that because sidewalks are so expensive and that 120 that's in for 2024, that was an effort to, that moved up from, I think, 50,000. We added 10,000 a year. I say we, we advocated, the town did it. And, and so now it's up at the base amount's 120. But our needs are so intense for sidewalks that that is just really a drop in the bucket. And I think that to really address our sidewalk needs, we need to look at a bond. And I, I think this came, I over, I heard this at one select board meeting mentioned. So I, I know that select boards at least talked about it at that one meeting, but I really think that, you know, we need to make some major investments in sidewalks in this town.
Thank you, Prudence. Kevin?
Yeah, I'd like to kind of maybe piggyback off of that and thinking about Brattleboro's declaration and the, the state of Vermont, thinking about climate change and how we're trying to reduce our emissions and most of the, if you want to call it a greenhouse gas budget, gets spent in Vermont with transportation and then heating. So I think transportation is a great opportunity. And for me personally, thinking, thinking about kind of to Gary's point, new people coming in town and us being a hub town, the more walkable and bikeable things are, the, the more habitable it seems. And kind of helps build that community where you can talk to people, interact in that way. So I think that's, for me, that's a lot of co-benefits to that. And especially the greenhouse gas piece.
Thank you. I do not see any other hands. Let me just take a scan through. In case I'm missing anybody on the screen. Oh, Barry. Go ahead, Barry.
Thank you for that most recent comment. Was that Kevin, I think? Also, what Alice said, that we ought to advocate because of everybody's concern and the overwhelming appreciation for reducing emissions. We are to advocate that sidewalk improvement and cycle improvement is urgent for, not only for our safety or our, you know, we're, let's say we're still a niche, we're still only a portion of the population. And here we are spending an hour and a half very valuably expressing our needs. But as Kevin just said, this weaves right into the over, the overriding concern and the affirmation that we have to reduce emissions. We shouldn't be so car-centric anymore, as Alice said very nicely. So so that can be our role in advocating that, that pitiful budget slide that you're showing us compared to what Alice said, a million dollars for resurfacing a parking lot, for God's sake. I'm sorry, I'm getting, I'm putting my own bias in there. So this is what we could do. The people who are in at town, at the select board and at the planning department, for the sake of our environmental priorities, our climate change priorities, our commitment to reduce emissions, that's why we want to do all this.
Thank you, Barry. Great comments. I'm not seeing any other comments. Okay. Well, in terms of next steps, as we said at the beginning, we will start putting some of these thoughts together. We will have another steering committee meeting or two and also maybe be kicking around ideas and prioritization as well as funding sources with that smaller group before we come back and give another presentation at a second public meeting. And then, you know, get more feedback before we present to the select board. So if you do have additional thoughts or questions, please do reach out to Sue. And here's her phone number at Planning Services and her email. Are there any other closing thoughts or comments? Thank you. Sorry, sorry, didn't mean to interrupt. He wanted to thank us.
I'm sorry.
Alice, hold on just a second. Go ahead, Alice.
Yeah, I just wanted to make, I didn't get a chance to say my quick comment about Main Street and because when you were showing that slide and that issue of the pinch points, and I just think, well, that's a place for sharrows, you know? I mean, just put the sharrows in on that spot and then, okay, then we go back to the bike lane. That works. I've done that in lots of cities. I don't think, again, that should be a place where we say, well, we can't have a continuous bike lane, so let's not do it. Also, again, traffic on Main Street is quite slow at that place. You know, from the co-op up to the library, that spot. And I think it would work to do sharrows bike lane if you needed to go back and forth to it.
And, and you think that as a, you would prefer that over something like the way around, some kind of zigzag way to, to get through downtown?
I will not use the way around. Yeah, yeah. Also, you know, honestly, for me, okay, so I'm a, I'm a bold cyclist, but bicycling through a parking lot is not a great thing for me. And a parking lot presents its own set of problems. People are expecting to go in and out of a parking lot. They're, I mean, they're going in and out of their space. They are really not looking for a cyclist riding behind them who's, you know, who's getting somewhere. And I, for me, as a cyclist, then I'm very scared because I think, I don't know whether there's people in, I have to look in to see, is there somebody in that car? Are they just about to move, et cetera? So I'm a direct A to B, not a way-around person.
Gotcha. Thanks. We have two comments in the room. So Kevin first?
Yeah, I, I enjoy the, the share-o idea and I think for, for Main Street there, and I think that would probably be very helpful for accessing when the bridge becomes a pedestrian and bike. I also have some, I guess, thoughts and concerns that folks may or may not know what sharrows mean. And especially drivers from different areas and generations where sharrows may or may not have been included on their driving test kind of things. So I don't know, downtown is already an area that has a lot visually and auditorily going on. So I think it might be hard to add, this is what sharrows means, share the road kind of thing. And it'd be picked up by drivers, but it, it would be interesting and helpful to have there. I think it gives cyclists a little bit more empowerment to say, no, no, I'm in the correct spot. Thank you for honking your horn. I hope you have a good day as well.
And that's exactly the way that you change culture. The Bicycle Transportation Alliance in Portland, Oregon, their, their voicemail said at the end of it, remember, be nice to drivers. Thanks. Gary?
And this, I guess this is the last thing, I know we're getting down to the one. I, I, I got a green away with what Alice was saying too. Hey, I, I get even scared driving sometimes. And I'm from New York. You want to talk about driving, forget about it. So even going in, I, I get scared even coming out my, but the biggest thing to me is noise pollution. I got away from that. And I think even that, and imagine that, I just imagine the quietness of just hearing bikes and e-bikes. You know, lowering the noise emissions, not just emissions itself, but noise does play a big part in your community and, and where you live at. So that being said, that's another good reason to find a good solution that's equitable, fair, and that way, you know, we can get back to the climate and also back with that. That might be a part of that as well too, but as they say, it's a work in progress. So hopefully we can get to that point as well too.
Thanks, Gary. We have A Watkins?
Hi, this is Andrea. Sorry to be so late. Lots of schools were having events this evening. It looks like you all went through a set of slides. Is there a way to get a copy of the slides? Will those be up on the planning department's website?
Yes, I will put them up on the planning department's website. BCTV will also be airing this. I might need to do a little redo of it first because I stopped, it didn't start recording right at the start. But I can get it up to speed. And so I, you should look for it on BCTV next week as well. And we'll put up a link on the website as well to the BCTV.
Great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Any other? Just taking a scan through. All right, I don't see any more physical or virtual hands. So with that, I think, Holly, do you have anything else you want to wrap with?
That was it. Really appreciate everyone's time this evening and, and all the thoughtful comments and
Yeah, thanks, everybody for coming. Please do reach out. Feel free if you've got additional comments that you didn't see on the map. Obviously, you only saw a bunch of them, but if you want to send any more to me, I will pass them along to Holly and the team. And we be on the lookout for another public meeting. We really appreciate your participation and your comments.
We'll get it.